This time I'd like to call to order the Monday, March 4th meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners, and I would like to welcome everyone here tonight. At 6:00 we had a work session where we discussed the definitions relative to salvage yards, junkyards, and recycling operations. At this time, we have Pastor Bill, as he's known from Moyoc United Methodist Church, is going to lead us in the invocation. And then we're honored to have an Eagle Scout here tonight, Brett Dennison, who we're going to recognize a little bit later, but he's agreed to come and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance after Pastor Bill's invocation. So please stand.
Let us pray. Most gracious and merciful Father, the Commissioners and community gather here this evening intent on doing good work and to use our resources wisely and well. They seek to represent fairly those who have given them this task. May they continue to recognize their responsibility to the past and to the future. May their efforts and decisions be blessed with insight and guided by understanding and wisdom. Heavenly Father, we seek your blessings upon this meeting tonight. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Bill. Brett, would you honors with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of agenda. We have no additions or deletions tonight.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we do.
Approve it as written.
Second.
I wanted to add a resolution for the Cape Hatteras access. They requested that we do that.
Yes, let's please, please do that. Would you allow?
Add the, um, yes. The agenda adding the resolution supporting HR 819, preserving access to the Cape Hatteras National Seashore Recreation Area Act.
Item seven in the consent agenda.
Item seven in the consent agenda.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, we have public comment. Well, did we? There's anyone that wishes to address an item that's not on the agenda tonight? If you would, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Josh Bass, President of the Currituck Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to come before you this evening and thank you for the county's support on our Business Expo and Jobs Fair this past weekend. It was a very good event. We had about 300 in attendance with 50 businesses and community groups there presenting. About half of the businesses there, we had about 20 businesses there hiring. One of those businesses was hiring 150 jobs they were looking to place here in the local economy. So if you have anyone looking, please tell them to call the chamber at 453-9497 or visit our website at currituckchamber.com. We have quite a few jobs posted. A lot of those businesses are gearing up for summer. So it is a great time to hire, and thank you again to the county for helping us support that great event that really got the word out on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh, and we appreciate the chamber and what you do. Our next item is recognition of Brett Dennison, the Eagle Scout. We have a resolution to present, and I'd like to ask the board to join me at the front podium. Let you come right up here. This microphone works. All right. Whereas the Currituck County Board of Commissioners takes this opportunity to congratulate Brett Dennison for having attained the coveted rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank in the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas Brett, the Scout Troop 117's newest Eagle Scout, and is in the class of the very few who reached this goal. And whereas at the age of 16, Brett has earned 91 out of 129 merit badges, which are offered by the Boy Scouts. And whereas Brett has chosen to remain in Scouts and assist younger Scouts in acquiring their goals. And whereas this is also the culmination of the patriotic concern and devoted efforts of numerous adult scout leaders and caring parents who have worked with Brett to this end. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Currituck County Board of Commissioners joins with others in the recognition of Brett Dennison for his outstanding accomplishments and wishes him continued success in his life endeavors adopted this the 4th day of March 2013. Congratulations. Certainly can say something if you'd like. We're proud of you. We don't think that the young folks that are doing a lot of the good get enough recognition. We spend a lot of time talking about the young folks that are doing bad. So we're just proud of you, and if you'd like to say anything, you're on TV.
Well, I'd like to thank one of the leaders who's been with me from the beginning is right here, Mr. Ike McCree.
Thank you, Brett.
And that's all.
Congratulations again. I think you have your mother here, who is, I am sure, is very proud of you, as she should be.
Tenure journey and spending.
Thanks for coming.
I may say, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Brett's mother also spent a lot of long hours helping out young men in Cub Packs 117 and Troop 117 as well.
Good. Thank you. Next item is our first public hearing. It's public hearing in action on PB 1011 Wild Horse Estates LLC, request for an amended special use permit for a private outdoor recreational facility. The property is located at 2088 Midnight Pass, Tax Map 99C, Parcel 2, Fruitville Beach Township. Mr. Woody, and is there a representative of the applicant? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a special use permit request for a kayak tour, actually, in the off-road area. The property is located in Wild Horse Estates, which is a subdivision in the Carova area, near Carova. Actually, the entrance to this subdivision includes the county's park facility. The property is designated limited service on the land use plan. It is zoned R-02 under this application. This was submitted under the old UDO, I should say. And what I'll note is, the board in May of 2010 issued a use permit to this property to allow an operator to conduct kayak and segue tours. And as you know, the use permits that are issued actually run with the property, not with the business. So what this is tonight before you is a request to amend that use permit to add an additional kayak tour operator to that. One condition of the existing permit is that the tours from this property must be in conjunction with an approved operator who has a commercial office in Corolla. And while a permit, while a tour operator is being added to this use permit, it's not increasing the overall number of tours that was originally allowed from this property. So basically, the original operator was Trade Bow Outfitters, and they run kayak tours and segue tours. And this new operator that would run from there is Coastal Explorations that is headquartered in Corolla Village. No increases in the number of kayak tours per day that are allowed, and they are asking for one kayak, or for a kayak rack to be stored on the property to hold kayaks there. You're required to make findings to issue the permit. Staff has recommendations for those in your packet. I'm not going to read through those. Real quickly, what I'll note, and the TRC recommendation, the Technical Review Committee recommendation, we've included all the conditions that were formally on the permit, and we've used strike-through emboldening to indicate changes. And effectively, what you're going to see is Trade Bow operators are going to have the ability to launch one, to run one non-passenger vehicle to this site to launch kayak tours, and then run one six-passenger vehicle to launch segue tours. And then Coastal Explorations has the ability to run one eight-passenger vehicle to launch kayak tours. That's a total of three types of tours that can occur on the site. And the important thing, probably the most important thing in this, is the Board of Commissioners adopted a licensure requirement recently that requires any outdoor tour operator that conducts a tour in the off-road area to be in possession of one of those licenses. Both these operators do have these licenses in place, or they will, and they're not increasing the number of vehicles that provide tours on the off-road area. So in other words, the vehicle that Coastal Exploration uses for the horse tours will be the same vehicle they have to use for these kayak tours as well. So there's no net increase in tour vehicles that occurs in the off-road area in association with this. Planning Board heard this request as well, and the Planning Board recommended approval as presented. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
So anyone have any questions of Mr. Woody?
I have one. Mr. Woody, has, there have been incidents, uh, many complaints about the kayak tours from any of the homeowners or anyone in the area up there?
We have not received any complaints, no, sir.
Or the said way, either.
Now, we've had some complaints on the segue. Originally, there was, there was some concern that the segue tours were occurring on private property. We've had some early complaints on that. I haven't had a recent complaint on that, but there were some of those originally. And if they do, and the segue tours are verified to be on private property, they'd be in violation of the use permit.
All right, thank you.
I will add that Commissioner Idlin, who could not be here tonight, called me today and said that he had heard nothing in opposition to this request, and he had, since it's in his township, and he had no issue with what was being requested.
We haven't heard anything either.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't have anyone that signed up for the public hearing. Is there anything you wish to add?
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you. I'm Warren Edes with Quivell and Associates. I'm here representing the applicant.
Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Make a motion of approval for PB 1011 Wild Horse Estates LLC.
I have a motion for approval.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next public hearing is public hearing in action on PB 12-04 Beckmore Estates, request for preliminary plat, special use permit for 12 additional lots and a 13-lot residential subdivision. The property is located in Moyoc at the northern terminus of Fane Drive, Tax Map 22, Parcels 89 and 89B, Moyoc Township. And if there's anyone who wishes to speak in favor or in opposition, you need to come and be sworn in now. Seeing none, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Mr. Woody.
Okay, this is a request that was filed under the old UDO. It is a subdivision in the Moyoc Township. You've seen this before. Board of Commissioners previously approved a conditional zoning request for this. It is a, tonight you're seeing a preliminary plat for the 13-lot residential subdivision. Property is currently zoned, conditional district, single-family mainland. It's in the full-service district of the land use plan, which supports residential subdivisions. And the size of the site is approximately 20 acres. Within that 20 acres, you'll have 13 lots. It does include a little over four acres of open space, which is 20% of the total tract. The lots will be served by county water and individual on-site septic system. Probably one of the issues that was most discussed during the zoning approval was the impact of drainage or stormwater from this subdivision. And one of the, one of the conditions that the Board of Commissioners placed on this application was that upon submitting the preliminary plat, which a lot of times with preliminary plats, we don't necessarily have construction drawings in place yet. It's just a preliminary plan. But the board actually requested that a drainage analysis of the development be provided to the county for review. In the packet, they, the developer and the applicant did provide an initial drainage analysis, and what they're going to do in this is provide for lot swells, ditches, and ponds, and other things to capture the stormwater and to provide additional storage. Some of the stormwater will be moved or directed towards the western property line, so not everything goes to the east. And then using some techniques such as rock check dams and swells and things to slow the velocity of the discharge. So what the intent is, is to minimize, or at least try to minimize, the impact this subdivision has on surrounding properties with regard to drainage. I'll note that if the preliminary plat is approved tonight, they've still got to bring back construction drawings, at which time a full engineered drainage plan will be required and reviewed by the Technical Review Committee, and your staff will handle that to make sure these zoning conditions continue to be met and any off-site drainage impact is minimized. In your packet, you have the SUP findings you have to make. Staff has made suggested findings. I won't go through those. The TRC has reviewed this request. We do recommend approval of it. We did have one, one planned correction about providing or improving the interconnectivity to the parcels to the north and to the east. We want to make sure those connecting parcels are paved and ready to go, so when future development occurs, we have connectivity. That was the only, only comment from the TRC. And the Planning Board heard this request at their February meeting, and they recommended approval with the staff findings. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Anyone have any questions of Mr. Woody? Hearing none, I'm going to open the public hearing. We had two gentlemen that signed up. Would you like to speak? Identify yourself. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval for PB 12-04 Beckmore Estates, request for their preliminary plat and special use permit, with those exceptions that our own staff has asked to include.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item C, public hearing in action on PB 1227 Balance Estates, request for a preliminary plat, special use permit for an eight-lot subdivision located on Bell's Island, on the north side of Bell's Island Road, approximately 325 foot east of the intersection with Ed Brumsey Lane, Tax Map 58, Parcel 11, Crawford Township. And since this is a special use permit, I have six people who have signed up to speak. Anyone wishing to speak, you need to come and be sworn in. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Picked up a couple. Raise your right hand, put your left hand on the Bible. Not one more? We got, we need to get more Bibles. Never have too many Bibles. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is another preliminary plat, special use permit request, and this is also being reviewed under the previous UDO. This particular request is for an eight-lot subdivision off of Bell's Island Road. It's just east of Keritoke Highway, near to that intersection. The property is currently zoned, single-family mainland, which was previously the residential zoning district. As you can see on the zoning map, much of the property around that area is zoned R. There's a little bit of GB zoning out on the highway. The 2006 land use plan designates this property as full service, which is, it is an appropriate area for a subdivision. It's within the courthouse sub-area. The size of the site is approximately 12 acres, a little over 12 acres, close to 13, and they're proposing eight residential lots. And you can see on the site plan display there, the layout of the lots. The density comes out to about .63 units per acre. Under the old ordinance, open space was not required for subdivisions of 20 lots or less, so you do not see an open space dedication here. This parcel is entirely divided into buildable lots. The individual lots will be served by county water and on-site septic system. On the TRC comments, you probably noticed there was a couple of lots that had some, some concerns with the perk test, but those have been worked through, and what they'll have to do is probably add some fill to a couple of those lots to get them to perk, which isn't necessarily unusual in that context. In your packet, you have the special use permit criteria and staff findings, and I'm, instead of just going over those or moving, I'm going to stop on those for a couple of minutes, when I go through a couple of issues with you real quickly that you'll need to work through tonight. One is that, one finding you have to make is that the proposed subdivision meets or exceeds the minimum requirements of the ordinance. Our ordinance, our old ordinance and our current one require a lot depth to width ratio of four to one. So that means through every one foot of width, you can't have more than four feet of depth. What that does is provide and promote uniform subdivisions, uniform lots. This particular tract, or this particular development lots, five through eight, do not meet that depth to width ratio. They exceed the four to one. The UDO allows the Board of Commissioners to vary that requirement if it finds that the physical dimensions of the track provide no other practical alternative. So what I would note to the board is, to the extent to which the use of open space or a street could or could not gain compliance, if you decide to allow the lot depth to width to exceed four to one on five to eight, you'll need to include that finding in your motion you make tonight. And again, you do that by finding that there aren't other, the physical dimensions of the track don't provide suitable alternatives for that. In other words, because of the way this track lays out, they are unable to meet the four to one requirements. That's one thing to consider as you move through this case. Another thing to keep, keep in mind, I think, is important tonight is, the special use will not endanger the public health or safety. Staff does have some concerns about the driveway cuts that are located on the curvature of this road, as you know, and most folks in the room do. There are some pretty significant curves on this part of Bell's Island Road. During our review, we, we had recommend, recommended that the applicant consider sharing driveways for lots four and five and six and seven. I know there are issues with shared driveways because you got two people that have to utilize one driveway entrance. That's the disadvantage. The advantage of the shared driveways is obviously you reduce the number of curb cuts. And I would say regardless, you know, as we do establish driveways, they certainly they certainly need to line up with driveways and access points on the other side of the street. So I think is, again, as you make your deliberation tonight, take great care to ensure that we're not creating a public health or safety stan, or issue here. We approached DOT for their comments on this. We felt like they may give us some insight into what is best. I did get an email from DOT today, actually, that said they are comfortable with the plan that's been submitted by the developer and feel like as long as the driveways on lots four and five are centered on the street lines across the street, and I don't know if you can see that, but you can see it on the, it's really hard to see, you can see it on the plan, that they feel like this, this was something that DOT could approve. And the other thing DOT recommended is that you, that a 30-foot setback for shrubs and trees be maintained to give sight distance clearance. That's the idea, that you don't want to put trees and things, that when people come out of the driveways or people are driving on the road, they can't see the turning car. So again, DOT's position is that if sight clearance is maintained and driveways are aligned, this is an appropriate access plan to their road. The other findings included, I think, I think the subdivision plan can, can meet. The TRC did review this subdivision at their January meeting, the TRC. And again, the Technical Review Committee noted the concerns with a lot depth to width ratio, that you have the ability to provide a variance for it. And TRC also noted the concerns with the safety along the road, the possibility of sharing driveways. And one last thing is, is the archeology agency has asked for a initial assessment of the property for archaeological resources, which is, which is fairly typical. Most, a lot of our subdivisions end up doing these phase-one assessments to determine if there are any kind of artifacts located on the property. The Planning Board heard this request at their February meeting. They did recommend approval, and the Planning Board included a couple of conditions that I want to go through real quickly. Planning Board said their approval is contingent upon the Board of Commissioners' grant of the variance for the lot depth to width ratio. The Planning Board approved it with lots five, six, and seven, five, six, seven, and eight having alternative driveways that Mr. Hyman provided instead of shared driveways. And finally, the Planning Board included the condition that a non-vegetative buffer be maintained from the cemetery through the curve, which is similar to what DOT's comments were. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Woody?
Yes, I have one. Mr. Woody, number three on suggested findings, you did not report that, where it says that the subdivision does not meet the minimum requirements of the ordinance. Also, it said, one, reconfigure the lots, create more open space, install a street into the property, and have lots access that new street. And that would reduce the subdivision, seven lots rather than eight. And I think due to the limited space on that highway or the street coming through here, that that should be looked at very critically, because there is congestion there. And if you go back to the map, you can look, and you know, there's a, a lot of, well, there's two other subdivisions that are within probably 100 feet of this proposed subdivision. I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, I'm sorry for that. That's correct. That was, there was, another option is to reduce the number of lots to minimize the curb cuts as well.
About, well, it'd be one lot.
By one. And it meets the lot width to depth ratio.
Right.
Mr. Woody, I have a question. I read through the comments that were in the Planning Board. There seemed to be a huge concern about having a homeowners' association with a small subdivision, which I certainly can understand that. Is there no configuration that they can keep the eight lots and, and not have to have a homeowners' association accept the way it's presented?
There is. And Eddie, I may be incorrect, but I believe early there was a drawing that showed the possibility of maintaining eight lots and also meeting the lot depth to width ratio. But it was, but it results in not exactly square lots, which isn't ideal, because they're more difficult to know where people's properties are and where you have to mow and things of that nature. But there was an early alternative, I think, that showed eight lots.
The alternative would be to cut the rear portions of five, lots five through eight, off, and just put open space behind them. You'd have eight lots at front of Bell's Island Road and a acreage of open space behind them, and that's what would require the homeowners' association for maintenance and responsibility of the open area. So you could simply draw a line at the four to one depth on those lots that are too, that are too long or exceed the ratio, just cut the backs of them off and dedicate that as open space. You'd save all your, you'd have eight lots, and you'd have an open space block behind And that would, that would make this subdivision conform to the letter of the U. And that would, that would make this subdivision conform to the letter of the U D O. It would also require the homeowners association to maintain that three or four acres that would, or probably three and a half acres behind those lots.
I thought Mr. Woody just said that he thought there was a configuration that wouldn't require the homeowners association.
I always think we had a lot layout that did, or that not?
I don't think we did.
Am I mistaken on that?
That didn't have a road improvement also.
Yeah, I may be mistaken in that, but I seem to remember a different configuration initially, but you would know, you would have drawn it, so.
Well, we drew it a lot of different ways, and the request is before you is owner-driven request. This is what they wanted to bring forward. And like I said, the way it's drawn, I could make, just by cutting off an acreage for open space behind lots five, six, seven, and eight, it would, and doesn't, just lot that off, and that would be the solution to the letter of the ordinance.
Okay, well, if we have no more questions from the board, I'm gonna open the public Have you signed up to speak?
You want me to go first?
If you'd like.
Certainly. I'm C A Howard. I thank you for allowing us to come here.
Please state your address for the record as well.
C A Howard, 179 Augusta Drive, Grandy, North Carolina. I am representing the balances on this piece of property, and there was one other drawing, if I remember correctly also, but that was having nine lots instead of eight. And the owners of the property did not like that design. They just did not like the way the lots were laid out and the way it looked. So they would prefer to lose that lot than to try to reconfigure just to get the most lots that you could out of the design of the subdivision, or out of the lay of the land. And if you will notice, I know you mentioned cutting the lots down from eight to seven. I think if you'll notice, they have not tried to, to give the minimum road frontage on these lots. Neither have they tried to give the minimum square footage to these lots. They are larger than what is required, and they strongly would prefer not to have a homeowners association. And yes, we could cut that back off. We could have cut that back off and not had, had to come to the planning board or the commissioners. We could have simply had it approved in-house, you know, with the, with the staff. But they just did not feel that for an eight lot subdivision that you need a homeowners association. I mean, but number one, for who's gonna take care of the homeowners association? Number two, it's what's gonna happen with the land behind your house? The land where I live, my, actually, my numbers are the same as these, and I am very thankful that I own the land behind my house, that there's not somebody else riding four-wheelers or building forts or doing whatever back there on that parcel. So, and the lay of the land, just, just, it lays out perfectly for the way that this has been designed. They had looked at other alternatives, but again, with, with this being a single ownership, then the, the land will look and conform pretty much the way it is now, other than you'll have the houses right there along the street. We have laid out all driveways and with recommendation, the recommendation of T R C and with the D O T. And we would just ask that you grant us the variance and approval for this subdivision to be laid out as it is.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions for me?
Any questions? May I serve Mr. Robert Lewis? And ask everyone, when you come forward, please restate your name and address for the record.
Robert Lewis, 217 Bell's Island. Sir, I don't know honestly if this is a correct form or time to address my concerns at all, but much like the gentleman just said, that was just speaking, I own the land adjacent to this proposed development. And like he said, he was glad that he owned the land behind his house rather than worrying about people building forts and driving four-wheelers and all. The last time I was, before this board, they were attempting to develop the same piece of land, they were trying to put in 60 to 65 condominiums, as I recall, it's been two, three, four years ago. That went away, thank goodness. But my concern at this point is that we've been on the land that we're on now on the farm since 1983. Since 83, I've seen two developments going across the street, as well as several houses on Bell's Island constructed. There's no stopping development, I understand that. But my concern is, the last time we were here, when they were talking about the condominiums, if they're, if they're putting in high-end housing where you're gonna have an asset to the, to the neighborhood and be an asset to the community, that's one thing. But if it's gonna turn into be section eight subsidized housing and bring an assortment of different types of problems with it, then I've got a real concern with that. Again, I live adjacent to the land that's being proposed to be developed. And since we've been there, the state, North Carolina state government, as well as East Carolina University, University of North Carolina, have had three different ossuaries of Indians that have been excavated off our farm. And totaling, between the three digs, they totaled out some 360 individuals out of a hole. We're continually finding artifacts as the farmer farms. We find different implements and things that the Indians have left, and I don't know if that's the avenue to address from my standpoint, to try to, to ensure that I'm not surrounded by low-income housing or problems in the neighborhood, or if this is the form really. But I had these things, I thought rigged where I was gonna be the last speaker, and obviously somebody turned the numbers back around after I changed them. But at any rate, I, like I say, I'm not sure if this is a correct form or not, but that's my main concern. I understand that you're, ultimately, you're not gonna stop development, I understand that. But hopefully, we can throw enough stuff in the way of problems that we can keep from having problems generated that we wind up living with. And that's all, that's the reason I wanted to speak this evening.
All right, thank you. I will say, I've got like three sets of numbers here, so I didn't know who's, I don't know who's on first base, so I just took them as they were coming.
Commissioners, I'm Carolyn Harris. I live at 195 Bell's Island Road, which is right adjacent to this property development. My major concern at this point, and I agree with Bob, that we are gonna have development, and it's something that we can only do so much about, but for those of us that travel the Bell's Island Road every day, it is not capable of handling driveways along that stretch of road where the curve is bad and so forth. My husband and I both have been run off the road with a car coming in the opposite direction, especially a school bus. One of the school buses has to stop to let the other one go by. The road is very narrow, and especially on that curve. I, I can't even fathom how they propose to let the driveways exit there on the curve. We have seen several cars go over adjacent to our property but into the ditch right there where this starts, like lot number eight or seven. If we don't see the car, we see the tracks. And I just think that it needs more consideration from that standpoint. I also am concerned about the fact that it says in this brochure that proposed drainage all flow to be routed to existing exterior ditches. Will all of those ditches flood if we get the least bit? And for those of you that have, if you have been down there, there's a huge ditch that was just put in about a year ago, and right, or in the middle of one of the lots, I'm not real sure which one it is. And that still fills up, and the house that sits on the left-hand side of the road as you're going out Bell's Island Road floods. The ditch has helped it, but it's not fixed it. And I just, I know that something's probably gonna go there eventually, but I don't feel that this, I think this needs more consideration as to what we're trying to do. And do we have any guarantee of what the size of the houses are gonna be? That's not been mentioned.
We don't have any authority to tell somebody what size their house is.
Well, you have restrictions. I mean, they have to have so many square feet.
We don't have the authority to tell somebody's size of their house.
But is there not a minimum and a maximum, a minimum square footage?
No, ma'am. Never has been.
When we developed the property across the street, we had a minimum square footage that the people that bought the property had to confirm with.
That's not a county regulation. That would have been a homeowner's.
It would have to be a restrictive covenant. You can set minimums through that. The building code may have some very basic minimums, but zoning doesn't have the ability to set minimum square footages for housing. So the board doesn't have the ability to set that as a condition legally.
So that means they can come in and put anything there? Am I correct?
Pretty much anywhere in the county, if it's done, a homeowners association, that the homeowners association may set house minimums, but Kerituck County doesn't have the authority to set a house minimum.
How would there be a homeowners association before the people buy the property?
It's a requirement of the county ordinance. When you go to develop a subdivision of a certain size, you're required to set up a homeowners association. And the developer sets it up, and then he decides what size homes he allows in his subdivision. That's how that's done, through a homeowners association.
I see. Okay, well, I just have very strong feelings about the drainage problems and the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Could I address that question?
We're gonna let you, you, since you're the applicant, you get to speak again at the end.
Edgar Brumsey, 196 Ed Brumsey Lane. My concern is the drainage and, you know, the type of development that go in there. All the, all that property drained down to the ditch on Ed Brumsey Lane. The drainage, the ditch is not on the line. The ditch is on the Ed Brumsey Lane property. And it grew, and all the drainage goes underneath Ed Brumsey Lane. It hasn't been cleaned out in 30-some years, and just a who, I am kinda concerned about the drainage. Nobody had contacted me about the drainage. And I also concerned about the type of development, you know, going there, and the size of the lots, and what size of the houses. We live on the water, and I don't want a lot of people there, you know, walking up to my property, going to the water. I don't want to be responsible, you know, a lot of people going up there, walking on my property, and like, because all the property adjacent to Ed Brumsey Lane, then, you know, kinda concerned what type of development going there. And concerned about drainage, because all the drainage is on my property. They go through my property. Thank you.
Mr. Woody, we, we have several questions about drainage. The county certainly sets parameters on, through its ordinance and North Carolina laws about how a property is developed, but the county cannot tell somebody they can't develop their property if they meet regulations and rules and get away with it. I mean, that's just property rights. However, we do have parameters people have to develop within, that they have to meet. And one of those is drainage. And Mr. Woody, can you address how drainage is addressed within a subdivision?
If the preliminary plat is approved, the next middle by the applicant's what's called construction drawing, that's the, the hard engineering that's done. And, and basically, the threshold they have to meet is that post-development runoff cannot exceed pre-development runoff. So whatever runoff occurs today on that property is an agricultural tract of land, there, after they've developed that and got, that development should not, cannot provide any additional runoff than occurs now. And that's probably the simplest way to put it. Sometimes that's done through ponds, sometimes on these large lots like this, it can just be done through swells.
And that requires an engineer to stamp it and seal it, that that in fact is happening.
Yes. Mr. Hyman will have to submit that, his firm, and then our county engineer will have to sign off on that.
Okay. So any drainage issues would be addressed if this is approved at the next step. But one of the questions was the ditch. I guess they can answer that when they speak again, but who owns the ditch for the drainage? Is that, is that part of any discussion?
The water, the water has to have an outlet. I mean, the, the water eventually drains to the sound.
Right.
Obviously, but whatever, the ditches that are off the property, they can't overburden those ditches anymore than they're burdened now with runoff. I guess that's the important part of that.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have a question?
I would just like to make a comment. The ditch beside the highway right there will carry that water. From the front and the back of it does go across and goes on to Brumsey Lane there. So there would be needful for a whole new drainage plan to contain the water on the property so that it wouldn't impact what's going on. And I don't know if you're aware of it, but I do know in the past, the road is washed out twice, right there, and it's called Doxy Creek, and it was literally Doxy River at times there when we have had, you know, major rains and everything. So with, you know, new houses going in there, that's less coverage, so it would be, or would have to be a pretty substantial, you know, holding panel or something to contain it. But it, it would be, it would be a problem there.
It would, and I'm getting out of my rim, the county engineer is here, and I don't know if he needs to come up yet, but.
Right. But I know that'll go forward if, if this is approved, and we can discuss it now, but it is a real concern.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna continue. We have David Henley. Ask you also to state your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, name is David Henley, 117 White Heron Drive, on Bell's Island. We've lived there for about two years, and previously, we owned property in Carolina Highlands. And we went through, as probably some of you may be aware, of the problems that they had with drainage, and they had to do a lot of realignment with their properties and the roads. To this date, a couple of properties out there still have issues. The problem I'm having is, one is for drainage, especially on the first three or four lots. It's what, about 250 feet from what's designated a riverine swamp on the westernmost boundary of the property here, the Balance Estates. And that's the North Carolina soil. I don't know if it's designated wetlands or not, but the, the other issues I have, and I did have some photos there that I took. And I went to a planning board meeting on the 12th and saw the issues there. So I went out on the 14th and started taking photos. Now, what I did was I took photos of the property up to what I call the Great Ditch. That's the one that runs all the way across from Brumsey Lane to Bell's Island Road. There are two other ditches that I've labeled one and two. Now, I went on the property, on the edge and perimeter, probably took photos, and I did that on the 14th, the 22nd, and the 28th. And I took photos of the same exact location on those, so you could see the changes, so that we get an average and some consistency of what's going on. so that you get an average and some consistency of what's going on with the water. You can't walk out there on those first couple of lots. It's just soaking wet. And that area of the roadbed on Bell's Island Road is always sinking in, and it's been repaved not that long ago. I don't know how anybody could think that there'll be the same or less runoff if you put the footprints of a house, the driveways, decks, patios, that stormwater is gonna run off of. It's not gonna percolate in. You're gonna have to have some kind of a holding ponds in there. The other issues that have been mentioned, and by the way, that road does flood all the time. But the other issues that have been mentioned are the safety issues, and that's one that I have a problem with. The curve there is a real problem. Cars that travel around that right now where there is no obstruction. Routinely, on the inside lane, they'll cross over and approach into the other lane when they come around that curve. And now, where there's no obstruction, no visible obstruction, you can see the car, and you can see if he's in your lane. When there is any kind of vegetation growing up in the future, you won't be able to. Notwithstanding, there's a bus stop that is, there's a sign right there on Bell's Island Road, that there's a bus stop right there. There's, there'll be mail carriers that will have to stop on those driveways around a blind curve, potentially a blind curve. The thing is, you can make a regulation for no vegetation to grow on a 30-foot setback. But you're not gonna be able to enforce it. Not unless somebody makes complaints, because you can take and go to your GIS, and you can pull up properties from aerial photograph, and you can overlay the lot lines, and you'll see encroachments all over. Sheds, driveways, and sometimes houses. So if you talk about, if there's not gonna be a homeowner's association to take care of that, are the people going to, and who's gonna enforce them? And the setback would probably be a lot greater, necessary probably a lot greater than 30 feet. If you start on that curve around Doxy Creek, and you look across to the end of the curve, it could be 50 or 100 feet on, say, Lot 5, 6, and 7, if you draw a straight line across. So I have issues also with the driveway cuts. People don't stop when they pull out driveways. I don't know whether they know you're supposed to or not, but they don't. They might yield, but they don't stop. And a lot of people, if they don't have a turn space, they'll either back into the driveway, or they'll back out, or they'll back into it. So that's an issue, and around the curve, if I know NC DOT has given some K on that. But I just think you're setting precedents here all over with all kinds of waivers, that what I saw with Virginia Beach, and then on down the road, Chesapeake apparently went to all the seminars that Virginia Beach did. And I would hate to see this area turn that way. So I just think there's a lot of issues. I think also that if there is a proposal for a road, putting a road on the northern boundary along the back of the properties, running alongside Ed Brumsey Lane, and coming out to the west side of Lot 1, where you have one intersection, basically, with Bell's Island Road, would be preferable to everything else. It wouldn't detract, I think, from any of the size of any of the lots. I can't answer your aspect ratios other than making some sort of a open space or co-op for, or even maybe a retention pond. But I, I'm just very concerned that Currituck is setting up precedent that developers that come with deeper pockets are gonna demand the same thing, just as these gentlemen did when they cited out projects in Grandy and said that, you know, we do it there, we can do it here. And that's what happened in Virginia Beach, all the way to the point where they couldn't enforce the green line. Anyway, I would at least suggest a longer look at this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have Barbara Henley.
I'm Barbara Henley. I live at 117 White Heron with my husband, David. And my concern has already been addressed, really, it's the safety issue with the driveways as they are allocated right now coming out onto Bell's Island Road. I think my husband made the point of entering or backing out of those driveways and what a, what a problem that would be with mail carriers, et cetera. And I really don't have anything to add, except that I'm very concerned about that. People walk on Bell's Island Road all the time. One of my neighbors said to me, I'm walking with my friend up Bell's Island Road, and I turned and was surprised, and she said, "Yeah, don't tell my husband." I mean, because it's, it is, the speed limit gets up to 55 miles an hour there on Bell's Island Road, and that's, that's a concern of mine. I mean, you know, people, people walk and jog there. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That's the last person I have written down, but I counted eight. Maybe I was counting Mr. Woody. Did you?
Yes.
Okay, and what was your name?
Carol Zellner. I didn't sign in.
Okay, give it to us again, please.
Yes, Carol Zellner. I live at 180 Bell's Island Road. And Mrs., what's her name, who spoke first? Harris.
Pat?
Carolyn.
Carolyn. Carolyn Harris spoke about the person that lived, that curve right by Vaughn Lane as, as you're going towards Bell's Island. As the curve evens out, I'm the house, we're the house that lives on that property. And we have the distinct honor of having a duck swimming in our lake on our front yard three years ago when we had all that rain. I think a lot of the issue here is we're looking at practical, technical situations, and we're, we're not, because you don't live on that road, you don't see a lot of the things that we have to deal with. And my house, our house is right across from Brumsey, like the 5, 6, 7 lots, and we're gonna get the brunt of all the rainwater and wash. We, we, our whole front yard was flooded, and I don't see how with, with the low rainwater, the water table that we have in Currituck, how in the world that's not gonna affect with all the pavement. It's just not gonna hold it. And when you talk about post-development runoff and testing, there's no way to test that until the development has already happened. And so the danger's already done. So we're, but my house is right there, and I'm getting, because, because the land goes dips. It dips right there before that curve, and all the water, there's no other place for it to go. And it's a real, real concern. And when we had all that rain three years ago, and it rained and rained and rained and didn't stop, the water came right up to about one section from our garage. I mean, I was just waiting. I ran across to our next door neighbor and said, "Do you think I should take my, should start taking, hauling the boxes out of our garage and stuff?" And, and he said, "Well, you know, it's, it looks like it's gonna stop," or something, so I didn't bother. But, but with a housing development, the sky's the limit. So I just kinda feel like, when they were talking, Mr. Lewis was talking about the archaeology and the Indian. I just feel like the American Indians trying to defend my land, you know? Because it's just, it's gonna be crazy. And I just think that when you're all sitting here, you're listening to the technology of it and, and the things that have been approved, and not looking at some of the things that we have to deal with on a day-to-day basis, and the safety, oh, that's another issue. I agree totally. But my house particularly has had, before we moved in, there was two lawyers that lived in that house, and they, they had a little four-year-old child. And she didn't even want the child to be out in the front yard, because someone came around that curve and went right in their land, wiped out their pear tree. And there was more than one that actually did that. And my next door neighbor has seen cars go right, his, some property was damaged from his, his land. And people just keep on going. They don't stop. And the speed limit, I'm thankful that they have put, I don't know who was involved in putting the 35 mile per hour speed limit signs, but that, thank God, that that has put in, because that was a good, big plus. And then I had to have ditches dug, and even so the ditches have been dug since that flooding that we had, even the small rain we've had, all those ditches have been filled every single time. And I just go, "Oh," and, you know, a small lake in front of my yard. We haven't had near the rain we had three years ago. So just keep, keep all these things in mind and, and ask God's will and discernment for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all we have signed up. Mr. Hyman, Mr. Howard have an opportunity to address the questions and concerns.
Okay. First, I'll address the restrictions. As far as, and I understand what Mr. Henley said, as far as he's moved in, and they're all concerned about what is going to be built on the property. I know that, that present zoning allows double wides to be put on there. And I know the county doesn't really have a restriction for that. But, but this is second generation. The Balances have owned this. The Holy Balance owned this, and the family has inherited it. They have no intention of doing anything there to deface the property or the family. And their intent is to go with stick-built homes. I can't guarantee you as to what size, but I know a minimum 13, 1800 square feet was what has been discussed with me. But they will be stick-built homes, is their intent. As far as the, the Indian burial ground, we have signed a contract with the department to go out there and do the study. They have been sent the check, been paid for to, to take care of that. We are trying to work with, with Eddie, we'll address further driveways and drainage. You know, we're cutting the swells through the property to slow down the water. Well, I just should let him cover all of that. But, and we're also trying to work the driveways in an area that it will, that will be as safe as possible. But these driveways will not cause people to go through there any faster. And I understand the concern. I know that road. I've been there too. And, and I understand people walking up and down it. But I, anyway, we will address it as best as we can, because we, we know it is a safety issue. Thank you.
Mr. Hyman.
As Mr. Howard stated, there's archaeological study underway. There's been a firm hired, I mean, hired to take care of that, to do the Phase 1 study. The, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Carol Zellner.
Where she lives, there's a culvert under, that crosses under the road onto the Balance property. And not far from the end of that culvert, there's a ditch that takes the water away from the DOT road to the back, to the ditch there at Brumsey Lane. And then down to Brumsey Lane to the, culvert under Brumsey Lane to the major Doxy Creek is where it all goes. Maintenance is necessary on all of these dishes. We've done a complete topo to find out where all the water does go. And there's a high point between her house and the cemetery where the water off the road does funnel onto the Balance property, and then crosses the Balance property to, you know, alleviate the water. And these, these culverts need maintenance and things like that. That will come forward as we do our design. We haven't pulled the trigger on any official design yet, except the rewriting of some of this water to the lot line swells. And with the low density that we're prescribing, eight houses on 12 and 1/2 acres, the pre-post figure on this type of impervious area versus the open farmland that we have there typically does generate, in the computer models, less runoff. We are gonna have lot line swells that will intercept and offer more filtration. We can provide check dams at the end of those swells before they leave the property to try to restrict it and slow it down some. This is a very unique shaped piece of property. Not only is it, you know, shaped like you're talking about, it also has about six feet of relief from the ridge up on the western, I mean, the eastern side down to the lots 1, 2, and 3. And it, all the water does go towards the back, other than just what a little bit drains down to DOT right away. But all of that will be addressed as, as we come forward with design plans to ensure that the pre- and post-calculations are equal or less. The speed limit on that road is 35 miles an hour. Another suggestion that we had, as we were trying to find some resolution to the safety issues, was reduce it to 25 through those curves. And, and further slow down, you know, people see 35, they drive 45. If they see 25, they might drive 35 in a situation like that. And I'll be available for any other questions, if you have any. I think Mr. Howard has addressed most of what the concerns were, and I'll take care of the technical aspects of it.
Mr. Martin, I believe you had a question?
Well, it's really the comment on this. The 35 mile an hour speed limit was put on the road less than a year ago because of the increased traffic flow. There is, you can't make it 25 through there. That's only for the residential areas themselves. So that's as slow as we can go. I know Mr. Howard did say they're gonna try to build to make it as safe as possible. My big concern right here, as far as looking at, is not only the water runoff and everything, it is the road itself. You've heard the comments from the people here. Two school buses passing there, they're doing 10 miles per hour, because it is that narrow there. Putting eight cuts, putting any cuts in there is going to cause endangerment. And I think really and truly, Vaughn Lane is right there. If you look at that map, the top lane right there, that's Vaughn Lane. It's got six houses on it. It's got its own street. Right there at the, below it, you have another subdivision. It's got 16 houses on it. It has its own access. And I don't see a problem at all putting your own access into that subdivision where we would have only one cut to worry about. And I would recommend that you put it on the bottom, where all that wetland is. If you're gonna lose a lot, that would be a good place to put it. But I'm not an engineer, and I don't do all the plans. But that's, that's my concern with it. There is just, there's a lot of water there, and there is a real traffic problem. And it's getting worse as more and more land gets developed. Thank you.
Do you have something, Ms. Gilbert?
Yeah, I concur with Mr. Martin on the drainage issues, and I am strongly concerned about the safety issues. I don't live on Bell's Island, but I travel that road a lot. And as a person who doesn't travel it often, I'm very cautious driving up and down that road. The other concern that I have is, that comes, you know, I get phone calls constantly, is the water. The water flow, and I'm talking about the county water, to Bell's Island. I don't know when that would be addressed, but I have some concerns with that, because if you're cutting into the line that goes to Bell's Island now, that's gonna cause the trickle of water that, at the far end of the island. In the summertime, they, they have trickle of water flow. So that's a concern that I have also, that is brought to my attention on a regular basis. So the safety issue, the drainage issues, if we can look at maybe a plan of a cluster or cutting in another roadway, or, you know, that, that curve is, is something that I am very, very cautious about and concerned with.
I have one question. The, Mr. Woody, if you would put the pictures back of the lots up on the, the cemetery in that curve, which, which lot does that adjacent, adjacent to, or is that prior?
It's on Lot 5. It's a separate parcel.
Separate parcel.
It cuts into Lot 5.
Okay, that was one question. Like I said, I mean, like, Mr. Martin and myself probably have a unique advantage. My father lives on Bell's Island. I've driven that road for 25 years. A safety issue, there is some, some issues. I'm kinda in agreeance with him far as, you know, maybe having its own roadway just due to the traffic flow on that road. I know it's, you know, we get a lot of complaints on it through public safety.
I was looking at the water lines. We have two water lines up to the, from 168 up to Doxy Creek landing. From 168 up to Doxy Creek Landing or to the roadway. There was a water line improvement made up to that point. We're also gonna be required to come under the road with a six-inch line for another fire hydrant to meet the fire requirements on here. As far as the impacts, when we do the flow tests for those hydrants, we'll also determine the... How much instantaneous demand will be on the additional eight lots, and that'll be looked into also. And we've had some discussion with the water department about that. If you want to...
I was just gonna say, I'm not sure. We haven't tried running a road from that end all the way through it. We looked at the other side of it. But I'm thinking that if you require that, then you're just... I don't think it's gonna be feasible. I think you're gonna make the land undevelopable. Because I do not think that you're gonna be able to afford to come down on that small end and run a road in all the way through that property. Of course, you would definitely be increasing some of your density. But I'm not sure setbacks and everything are gonna allow you with the cost of doing that because not only do you have to run a road in there, but you've also got to run your infrastructure through there. And I just do not think it would be feasible to do that.
How many cuts are y'all proposing? And I mean, I personally, I was just speaking to...
Eight.
Eight cuts. I was speaking to Commissioner Griggs. I put... I hate to admit this on TV, but I put my vehicle in the ditch probably in Mrs. Zellner's yard when I was 18 years old. So it is a rough curve, but...
Well, I've come close, but I don't think that these driveways will be the ones that will cause you going in the ditch on that road, on that section. They might slow you down.
But it was when it was ice.
But we will put the driveways in a way that you will have visibility. We can restrict them under the deed restrictions. Even though it's not a homeowners association, we will draw deed restrictions, which will require the minimum of the building and the type of structures put there. And doing so, we can also set in that 30-foot setback as far as the vegetation. And I think we were asked who maintains that. And I think that would fall under... It was determined at planning board that would fall under county to if that was in violation, if somebody was to write a letter. But we would set it so visibility would be good on those driveways as possible.
And I don't know if it has any... We have a picture here, and I know there are some shared driveways on Tulso Creek Road. How many cuts are on that one sharp curve? I guess adjacent to... Keep going to Mrs. Zellner there. To right after the curve, right after her property. Is there two cuts on that curve or one?
Well, I believe there's actually three because we're gonna do one right across from that first street, as you see there, on Lot 5. But what you could do was on those lots, you could push them either further away, whichever you would require, further away from that curve or in the other direction. But there was a couple of these lots we were gonna try to do, share, not one driveway.
We had proposed as not a single drive straddling the property line, but two drives parallel. So the entry point would be within 10 feet of both drives coming out. So in all practical sense, it'd be one driveway on two lots, but each one would have their own ownership.
Something like they have, like, right there on the corner of Sawyer Town and Tulso Creek Road. I believe there's... What is there? Six residences with...
Those are shared driveways. One entry point. What we were talking about was having a split between the two, but it's within 30 feet of the same entry point on the road. And then you go 200 feet to the next one along these lines.
And they would be on each property line, and there would be a gap in between them, which would allow them to be cleaned out or whatever as if... Because if they were longer, of course, they got blocked up. But these would be able to be cleaned, but as close together as possible. And we would try to restrict, if you would like for us to, you know, to keep whichever way from that curve as the board sees fit to make this more safe. But I don't think that the driveways are gonna cause anybody to go any faster or anything up and down that ditch. I mean, up and down that section.
I don't think the concern is the speed. I think it is a concern of people backing out of their driveway while somebody's coming up and down that road.
Well, I'm hoping with lots being of this size, like at my house, my lot, and I've set my... Because my lot is so large, I was able to set my house back 100 feet, and I'm able to do, you know, a circle in my yard and come back out. And I can't guarantee that that would be done here. I can't tell somebody how to drive out of their driveway and govern that. But I would think that someone with a yard that large would do some type of turnaround, not set their house back so far. Now, that's something that we can restrict. We can put a minimum setback on the lot from the road. And we can do that greater than. I know other subdivisions I've done, I've made it as much as 90 and 100 feet. And you can make the house setback. And I can't imagine anybody's gonna back out of that driveway 100 feet. They're gonna do some type of turnaround on their own property to where they could come out forward. So that might be an idea. And I don't see that being a big issue.
What's the... I know we had said it was, what, 12 and 1/2 acres for eight houses?
Yes, sir.
What's the... I know, I mean, just doing math, they're probably a little over an acre per lot. What's the dimensions of those lots? The average, the width?
Well, the average...
I mean, I know an acre is 43,000.
Unfortunately, my eyes aren't all that great, but I can't tell you. I can't read. It's too small.
I can't read it on them neither. I have pretty good vision.
His map, I tell you.
The first four meter length-to-width ratio required.
Well, I think he's talking about down here. He's talking about these.
The width.
Number eight is 85 and 50 for addition. So 85 and 50 would be, what, 135? The next one's 132. The next one's 150-something. And that's just quick math in my head for what's drawn there. But we weren't trying to do the minimum that we could.
And the depth is 716 on the deepest. Or on the end, it goes to 730, 750, and 760.
And like you said, I think we meet pretty much all the requirements of the UDO, if I'm not mistaken, other than the width-to-depth ratio. And we could do that with a homeowners association, but we just do not want to do that. We do want to have subdivision regulation and govern the property, but we do not want to have a homeowners association if at all possible.
We have any further questions of Mr. Woody or the applicants?
Thank you. I'm having a setback.
I think while this is state study, they may, but I think it's going to...
All right. Hearing no more questions, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
I motioned that we table it at this time due to two commissioners being out for certain reasons. And I mean, I think there's still a few more questions.
We have a motion to continue.
I second that motion.
Have a second. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say, gentlemen, you've heard complaints here from the people who live on and by that road and have to use it every day. I'm really looking at that, and I think as a subdivision, you probably need to go back to the airs and ask if you might work on it a little bit, see if you can fix some of it. I mean, if you can put a single cut in there, and I don't have a problem with it, but the way it's configured right now, I really do. And that's all I have.
That's why... I mean, that was one of my main reasons why I said that, just for the safety issue due to the... I mean, like I said, I know that curve. I mean, if there's something that can be reconstructed, I don't think the...
So do... Excuse me.
The public hearing's closed.
I'm sorry.
I don't think the...
We're gonna have... We're gonna get you some information, though. I just have closed the public hearing.
I don't think the general consensus of the... From what I heard, that, you know, people don't per se want... They just want it to be, you know, it's... That road, I mean, how many fatalities? I'm 38 years old. We've had, what, three or four fatalities on that road since I was in middle school? I know there's a lot of safety issues on that.
Especially that section.
Especially, I mean, especially that curve. You know, like I said, I don't know if there's something that can be addressed. I'm not against their subdivision, but just I don't know if it can be revamped, as Mr. Martin said. That's why I motioned to table it.
And we have a proper motion and a proper second in conversation. But I think it's only fair to Mr. Howard and everyone involved exactly what it is you want him to come back with. And we're all over the map here with different things you want to see. And I guess that's what you were getting ready to ask, is what is it?
Yes, sir. It was. And hoping it wasn't a road right down through the middle of it.
Yeah. So I think it's only fair that the board, if you're gonna table it, you need to let him know what it is you want him to bring back.
Yeah. I would think all the concerns that the people have spoken to and the commissioners is that the preeminent one is certainly the road issue and the safety. And of course, that would take precedent over, at least in my consideration, over most anything else. We talk about the drainage, and that's apparently an issue, but, you know, that's technical about it can be addressed, or it can't be, or it will be addressed, or it might be addressed. But one of the things that seems to be unaddressable is the safety issue with the number of cuts that would be in a curve. I think everybody's in agreement that that's an issue, or that, to me, it looks to be the preeminent issue. So I would... I think I would suggest trying to rework your plan in a manner that would significantly reduce or reduce it to one cut. And just because of the logistics of the road. Now, I think I hit the major one on that. Is there any other guidance?
I would agree with that.
Anything else, Mr. Martin, Mr. McCord?
No. As I said, that's my big concern with it.
All right. Hearing that, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carries. Next item's consent agenda.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Move for approval?
I have a motion for approval. A second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next item is commissioner's report, which... Before we do that, I do want to say that Commissioner Idlet is not here tonight due to the tragedy at Knott's Island where the fire chief died. In the process of fighting a fire yesterday. And they're having a community meeting in Knott's Island, and Mr. Idlet is there tonight. And Mr. Petry is on the mend from his surgery, and he will be back at the next meeting. And I should've announced that at the beginning. But we'll tell you, Mr. Petry has sent thanks and is really grateful for all the prayers, cards, visits, thoughts. And it really means a lot to him that the folks in the community would reach out to him. And of course, we need to remember the folks at Knott's Island and our prayers as well because that's a real tragedy in their community and neighborhood. So I did want to get those out of the way while it was still fresh on my old mind. So with that, commissioner's report. Ms. Gilbert?
The only thing I have tonight is the Moyoc Small Area Plan will meet on March 11th at 7:00 PM here at the courthouse due to needing the equipment here, the electronics, and we're gonna be looking at some mapping. So it's important that we have that meeting to be held here at the courthouse. So 7:00 PM, March 11th will be the next Stakeholders Committee for the Moyoc Small Area Plan.
Commissioner McCord?
Just to touch on what you said, reference to the chief from Knott's Island. You know, these guys, the key word, they're volunteers. I don't even know. I believe they pay $10 a call. You know, the guy's out there risking his life, condolences to his family. And, you know, public servants, be it deputies, firemen, EMS, you know, I mean, they do a lot for the county. And like I said, it's just condolences to his family and everything. And it's pretty much it at this time.
Mr. Griggs?
I'd just like to concur with Kevin in thoughts and prayers with the family who remain. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
As do I, to the Morrison's family and to the Knott's Island Fire Department. Fire departments get very close together, and so I could just really empathize with what's going on over there tonight. On another note, Barbara Snowden, who is the Currituck County historian and who is part of the Currituck Historical Society, has... They have put up for sale a 150-year anniversary poster. And I think these are selling for $10. And you can contact Ms. Snowden or the Historical Society. These sketches were drawn by Union Officer in 1862 of Currituck County. You can see the Currituck Canal. Today, it is lined with homes and businesses, marinas. But here, it is flat, no trees on either side, and it's just a unique drawing. These sketches were made when the Union Army was setting where we are tonight. They also give some indication of Hampton Roads and sketch some of the burning of homes and buildings through the county. And again, this is... This was discovered, these sketches and paintings, a couple of years ago by the Historical Society. And they tried to get them on loan so they could display them. But they are owned by the University of Minnesota in Duluth, Minnesota, and they're displayed in their library, and they would not turn them loose because they're very valuable. But these are pictures of them, and if you would like a copy, please contact Ms. Snowden or the Historical Society. That's all I have. Thank you.
At our last board meeting, we were... We discussed a local bill that's probably gonna have statewide implications about allowing the school system to set their calendar for the year instead of the state setting it. At the time we passed that, we agreed to that bill. It was under... I was under the impression that it was so we would start school later in the summer. But according to phone calls I've received and article in the newspaper, it's being talked about here in Currituck, starting school earlier in the summer, which is the opposite effect of what I thought we were supporting. So I'm, as commissioner, going on record that I do not think that the school system should be looking at starting earlier in the summer before getting kids that have summer jobs, and a lot of the local businesses depend on those kids for employment opportunities. And as long as you get the 150 or 180 days, I don't know why the calendar can't be compacted a little bit instead of stretching it out and starting before Labor Day. I understand we may have to start before Labor Day, but I don't want to see it backed up. So I'm just alerting the board and the public that have called me. I did not support that for school to start earlier. I supported it for school to be able to start later. And I don't know if our school board has actually taken a position, but I was told there was an article in the paper where it was discussed about starting earlier in the year. And I just... That's not why I supported that. I want to go on record, that's not why I supported that. And with that, that's all I have this evening. Mr. Scanlon, you have anything to report?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move?
A second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, can stay.